You all ready to move to the working? I agree.
Is that needed?
Six.
We call the meeting January 9th, 2021. May I get your attention and attention? Good evening for today and watching over everything for our city and our community, Lord. Lord just pray to you protection and find all of us your tening blessings. Lord just ask that you help us make the best decisions possible tonight, and then we keep you in our hearts and minds as we do so. In this name and prayer. Amen. On the agenda, we need to move executive session up to the top of it. Other than that change, do we have a motion to approve it?
Make a motion for adjournment.
Have a session. Y'all in favor? Motion here. We need motion to go into executive session. We've got to discuss personnel and litigation issues in executive session, but instead of, it's called in the hallway. So instead of us asking y'all to leave, since we've got a full house, we're going to go into the City Hall office, and that way y'all don't have to go in the hallway and sit in the hallway. So we need a motion to go into executive session.
Our motion that we, yeah, just waiting for right now and go into executive session.
Have a session. Y'all in favor? Motion here. Go back to seats.
I've got business years or fifth on that year.
All right, we'll back to the rest of session. We'll start out with the appointments. We'll start out with city manager position. I made the recommendations that we appoint, Smack in the Rittenhouse for a six-month interim basis with the city manager's position. That's my recommendation for the board. Do we have a motion for that?
Uh, should I have Smack pick up our city manager for Adam?
All right, you got a say.
So.
All right, discussion?
Yes, I would like to say this. Back in December, Tom brought this idea to us. Um, he said that, what he just said, that he wanted to not reappoint Wallace as city manager. He said to me that Wallace was not doing anything illegal. He said that he was not stealing money or anything like that. I said to him that that's the kind of man he would want to keep on the job. The reason he gave to me, him and I talked over there in the commander's office. He said to the council for not reappointing Wallace that he had a problem communicating with Wallace. And some people had told him that they had problems communicating with him. He said sometimes Wallace would call him and tell him things. And if he called, Wallace would tell him everything is okay. And Wallace had made some mistakes on the budget. And my idea with the budget was, and I just stated to them, is we approved the budget. We talked about the budget in July, of June last year. And we, the council voted to approve the budget. So I said to him, if there were some mistakes in the budget, they were not only Wallace's mistakes. They were the council's mistake because we voted to approve the budget. Okay? And I told him at that moment that I disagreed with him. That I said, if I'm, if I have, I have a principal at the school. I have worked for the government all of my life since I was 17 years old. And I said, if my school, if I have somebody that's older than me in the chain of command. And if I'm not doing something right. I think the principal will call me in the office or whoever that is. And say, you're not doing such and such right. And if it's something that's not detrimental, then they will give me an opportunity to fix it. That's what I said. And that's what I would do because I've been a super bad, super bad before. And I said, this man has worked all the way down to December '24. And the council has not been aware of many of the problems that Tom said when we was in executive session. So I said, now you want to get rid of him because this is what you want. All we know is that he knows that he is, all we know and all he knows is that he has been doing a good job because you have not pointed out anything that he's not doing a good job on except one thing we took care of that back in July. That's what I said to him. I said, and not one department head has come to the council and told us that they have a problem working with Mr. Wallace. He was appointed city manager at Homewood on January 5th of 2022. And when he took office, when he was appointed, the city was in a colossal mess on the first day on his job. And he told, and I had a conversation with Mr. Wallace because I wanted to know his passion for this city. Because he, I worked with him at Homewood State Prison. He was a deputy coroner for seven years. And he's worked at various capacities in this city. And I said, and I, and I, in my conversation with him, that he loves this city. He has a passion for this city. He wants to see this city thrive. He said, when he walked in, the first day on the job, there was a desk. He said, when he walked in, the first day on the job, there was a desk outside their office. They have a stack of bills that had not been handed. And I just told him in the meeting that, um, you, you, sometimes, let me say it like this. I spent time with Mr. Wallace during, after the hurricane, okay? And I observed his professionalism. And I was in the vehicle with him. The first place we stopped at was the post office. He wanted to see what the post office needed to, um, so, so that they can get the stack of mail out. The postmaster said that she needed some gasoline, but she did not have any gas cans. So we went to the wreck park. And he asked Mr. A.C., can he get some gas cans, put some gas into those jugs for the wreck park? I mean, to take back to the post office so that the mail could be delivered to the citizens of Homewood, Georgia. We went, got the gas, came back, went back to the post office, took the gasoline so that the city, so that the post office can deliver the mail to the citizens of, of Homewood during our devastated time. And we also went to, uh, like, I think it's the mill on the Waycross Highway to see if the, the city can drop off the debris from the storm. He communicated that. So I said that to say that Mr. Wood, Mr. Mincy has passion for this city. And he's been there through the trying times to the heart, through the hard times. That's what I said to him. And I said to him also that even though you may make some mistakes, and we all have made some mistakes, but are they mistakes so detrimental that they can't be fixed? You know what I'm saying, that they can't be fixed? We have not been made, made aware of anything this council has not been made aware that I know of, and I've been here, I've been here at every meeting, I have not missed a meeting. He has been, he has endured, Mr. Mincy, endured the distasteful things done to him by the previous mayor. He has been faithful in the midst of the storms and the challenges this city has faced. He has stood through all the triumphs. He has walked in integrity and good character. He was showing, he has shown love, he's shown loyalty, he's shown dedication and commitment. And I hope and pray that we make, that y'all are making the right decision. And like, and, and I salute Mr. Mincy. I even salute the administrative staff that works with him. I salute the department heads and all the city workers. But whatever the works will is, I pray that it be done with truth and with intention. And I'm done.
All right, so we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Since, since I mean.
Well, we got a motion in a second for the appointing Samantha for a six-month interim for city manager. And so we got a motion in a second. So I'm asking for any more ayes. And if there are none, I'm asking for the noes.
No.
Okay, so that's two to two. I break the tie. I, I side with this. Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
I have nothing against city manager Samantha. I don't like either, but if appointing her in a situation where everything is in a mess, that's kind of a bad situation. Wasn't about the wrong something, the thing wasn't in a mess, I said Samantha is the right person.
All right. The other one, instead of going blanket one, is with the city clerk. If we're moving Samantha up to city manager for a six-month interim basis. I recommend in moving Rebecca Colley up to the city clerk for a six-month interim basis to, you know, work alongside Sam because they know the, our quick looks and our talents. And that, for that motion, that's, I'm making a, a recommendation to appoint Rebecca Colley to the city clerk's job for a six-month interim basis.
Uh, oh yeah.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Or I'll take over the city clerk's office for interim, period.
Okay. All right, all in favor of that? All right, all opposed? All right. I'll break the tie and we'll make Rebecca the city clerk. All right, the regular appointments, we'll do a blanket appointment. Are there any changes or we're just reappointing everyone else on this list in front of y'all? Do we have a motion to make a blanket appointment to cover all these reappointments on the list in front of y'all to all positions?
Uh, I'm actually gonna have, uh...
A blanket appointment. All right, we have a second. All right, all in favor? Opposed?
Say what now?
All in favor of the other appointments?
I'm in favor of those appointments.
Any opposed? All right, motion carried. All right, um... I want to know, we need to approve the minutes from our last meeting, December seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four?
Um, there's not a thing that I don't see any advantage for the appointment of Mia Robinson because remember I recommended that Shika, Shika Cleary Robinson be placed, uh, be appointed to the zoning board.
And I think that was an executive session.
No, it was, we, we have not opposed.
It was on here?
Yeah, it was after executive session.
Oh, I, yeah, I had, I usually Wallace did that one, I'm sorry. But I'll make that mention.
All right, would that change that we unanimously approved, um, in the office, the zoning board? Add that to the minutes with that?
Now, I wasn't voting for that, that was...
You voted for it.
What I, that I vote for that.
Uh-huh.
I don't think, I don't think that's...
You voted for that. All right, so would that change Sam? Would that change, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
I have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
We have a second. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, Chad, you want to talk about the council pay, whole business? Where we are with that?
Yes, um, this could be the first meeting we discussed at last meeting, but this is the first reading of the, um, notice to change the charter of the city regarding pay of the, of the council members, of the mayor and council members. And the first reading has noticed the increase in salaries of the mayor and, and, and council members. So just need to, to consider that. And the February meeting will be the, the, the second reading and, and time for first votes. So tonight's, um, being presented officially and an opportunity to discuss, debate, recommend, whatever the council sees fit to do.
So what, I mean, what do we need to do tonight? Just, we got it?
It's been presented.
It's been presented.
So if, if it's fine and there's no changes at this time, just, just, um, I think the vote would be to, to present it for the, the, the second reading and a, and a vote at the February regular meeting.
Okay. All right, um... I've got it. I'll see it here. Next one, Jim, is the debris removal contract extension.
He's actually at the G-Dog, um, where it says utilities letter. He said that was for, for widening. I didn't know that the debris removal contract.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Do you have that?
No, he didn't give me that, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, um... All that is, is just, is, is the same thing the county did. There's timeframe for things that they have to be done by. And they're not through with the bring removal, so there's just a contract extension of that. It's just for, I think, me and Chad to sign. And we'll sign that as long as y'all are okay with extending the bring removal contract for twenty-one cities. Y'all have a problem, then I can email it to y'all tomorrow, just so you'll, just so you'll have it.
Yes, please.
All right.
What, uh, what timeframe is the next, is the bring or extend of the...
Since I don't have it in front of me, I don't know. But I will, I will let you know tomorrow too, so you can read it later. Next on my list is the G-Dog expansion, utilities letter. Samantha, do you know if we're supposed to do anything with this point?
He told me that y'all were supposed to just look over it, that it was about the widening of the four forty-one, that it was just, um, informational for your city. That, you know, what G-Dog was gonna be doing. And how, you know, that's how much it was gonna be. And that they'll pay a hundred percent. He was just saying it was informational for...
All right. So y'all can look over that at home and if you have any questions about it, we can bring it up. Next one, Jim, that is revolving home funds, but I don't see anything in here about that.
Um, it's, it's, there's a, there was an email, um, that I had right here. Another day, I was, Wallace paid for me. Um, because since it's sort of long and long, then you have to, Jeff said you have to have some many divisions and never five years to keep that going. And so we're, like, all in along with that. He said he's got two, like, ten, then times it hard. When you get more, isn't, we just got a caller company one night.
So basically, if we don't find some businesses around town, that's new businesses, that's needing a bar revolving home fund. If you don't loan it out enough, the state can take revolving home fund money back.
Exactly.
And so we will, um... Can you reach out to some businesses that we got? Because sometimes it's not just new businesses, it's, it's existing businesses that we can, and it goes through the, um, development authority. It's kind of like the, the lending board, but it's just the money comes through the city. And so, um, if we don't find some businesses that need this money that will help expand, then there's, there, just so y'all know, there's, there's regulations for it. I mean, you've got to be creating jobs, there's different things you've got to be doing with it. You can't just come borrow money. You've got to, you've got to create a certain amount of jobs you have to create. There's guidelines and an application for it. And then the, the development authority approves it. But if we don't find some people locally that need this money, then the city's gonna, gonna lose the state cap back. We've got a renewal in here for the, um, I just lost it. For Kitch Fitness membership renewal. Samantha, what is that?
Well, whenever I first got here, Wallace said that, um, they was offering the annual membership at Kitch Fitness for all of the city employees. And the annual membership was seventeen hundred dollars and it was paid by the city. And, um, I think the police officers do, um, use that, um, achieve that.
Chief, um...
Um, but that might, um, maybe, um, they will...
They do use it, okay.
I know, I know the police do, achieve that.
All right, that's, that's fine. And we need a, um, if the police department uses it, that's, that's great. And we need to remind the rest of our employees that they, that we have it. So we need a motion to approve renewing the annual membership in fitness.
Oh, a motion that we, we renew the, uh, membership for fitness.
All right, all in favor? All right, any opposed? Motion carried. What do we need to approve about the parade, the King Day parade, January twenty?
He said, um, that it was just to show you guys that he's already got what you got and they have a parade route that it never changes. And he was just letting you know, um, that they have the permit and everything for it. It's all good to go as scheduled.
Okay. All right, so there's nothing for us to approve of that? All right, we agree. There's, there's the... All right, back to the whole business, this is the contract that has been emailed to us, the extensions.
It's referencing the contract, I believe in October. Um, and the, the, the due date on that contract, and extending it for at least sixty days as well as states until July, um, January thirty-first. Just we need a motion for the, for the mayor to, to keep the, the first amendment.
That is right there.
So it's January thirty-third, twenty-twenty-five. So the end of this month.
And Samantha, uh, tomorrow, I'll get in touch with them. Let's find out what they're saying about these big stumps. That's people got inside the yards, that they come by and pick up stuff that they left, the big stuff. About what they're gonna do about, what they're gonna do about that.
They don't already think they're true?
No, that's what we're extending. They're extending it until January thirty-third. All right, the financial report is in the, um, is in front of y'all. We need to approve the financial report. All right, we have a motion to approve the financial report.
I'll approve the financial report.
All right, we have a second.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? All right, motion carried. All right, the Pam, Susan, Miss Kamai, Rutherford, you can do that for investments?
I'm actually standing in for Mr. Mike tonight. Um, I have a little program for y'all tonight. So I did with Aurora Taylor. I have two, you know, they were... Aurora Taylor. I'm from Baxley, Georgia, originally born and raised. Now, one more extract. Um, I'm always gonna do this. So I work for Ethan Jackson Investments out of Cairo, Georgia. Um, and what we specialize in is rural housing. My boss, Jeremiah Horn, is born and raised in Cairo. I'm born and raised in Baxley, Georgia. And our product is... And our product is specializing in coming into rural communities, building eco-efficient apartment homes, very small, twelve units at a time. And with that, we are able to offer rents at sixty-eight percent AMI, up to a hundred percent AMI, depending on which product we build. Um, we only go into other rural cities to build this product because we're aware that most rural cities are facing a housing shortage of at minimum two hundred homes. And that's a very hard need to meet. As a result of that, economic development is reduced. We are struggling to retain our prime workforce. I'm part of the real-time prime workforce age group. Eighteen, thirty-four years old. That's a group you want to keep in your communities. And we're losing about eighty-five percent of that age group across most counties in South Florida. Um, and the reason for that, by and large, is housing. Um, so I lived in Atlanta for eight years for school and work and came home, and I spent the last, better part of the last two years trying to find a lease. Every time something came on the market, it immediately rented. And I know that this is true of a lot of kids who want to move home, who want to live in rural Georgia again, and there's just not housing. So what our product does is we come in, we take half the acreage to an age group land, and we build twelve units on it at a time. In some cities, we're able to do multiple little parcels, piece it into the city so that way it looks as natural as possible, matches what y'all already have here. But it really gives y'all that opportunity to offer new housing. Um, it offers a chance for your other landlords within an area to compete because we're coming in and we're building something that's eco-efficient and high-quality, um, looks really nice. Um, one of our products, the higher product, which is gonna be on page three, our Victorian style, or page four. Um, the Victorian style actually has stacked in washer and dryers in unit, which is not something we'd see a lot of these days. Um, and for us, these rents are going to be very competitive with what's currently being built. A lot of times, if you look at Baxley, if you look at Blackshear, the few cities that are building housing, that rent is as much as thirteen hundred a month right now. For us, we're about nine sixty-nine at the top end right now. So for us, we're hoping to come into Homerville. Um, there's a couple of city-owned parcels that are very, very favorable to be built with this product. Um, and we're hoping to have the council's consideration at some point in the future for us to be able to purchase this parcel and build our Victorian-style unit on there. It looks like a historic home on the outside, both the front and the back look the same. Um, so it blends in to the natural architecture of the city. But there are twelve units inside, and all of those units, we partner with your major employers, the hospital system, the school system. We target that person and say, hey, we know y'all want to hire new grads, we're building new apartments. Um, and we partner with them to be able to fill up those apartments and have them leased up and try to help retain new employees for those major employers. And so that is what we are hoping to partner with the city of Homerville or private citizens who have land available, if we can be directed in their direction, to be able to bring that product here. So did anybody have questions for me that I can answer on this? You do have our contact information. That's my address. That's on there.
We'll be in touch with you to talk to you about what we need to check this on, and we need to see what properties y'all want to look at.
Yes, sir.
Um, when will we be in touch with you this month? We'll look at that, and maybe we can get a little bit more definite plan.
Yes.
Where and what, and...
The main parcel we're looking at would be this one right here beside the Board of Education. Their utilities on site and a road access, so that we don't have to have a G-Dog fee for it. And we could, once it's reached out, we'll break ground as quickly as we can to bring this product to y'all. So, yes, sir. Thank you all so much. My account and seller are there for y'all.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Jeannie Kent?
Uh, not his main to get her. I'm standing in for Jeannie tonight. She lives in the Ghost City. She has a hard time getting down here tonight. I'm the regional director for CSR probation services. We're a misdemeanor probation company. We've been servicing the municipal court of Homerville here for greater than twelve years now. Um, we were previously Setilla probation, and then CSR purchased us. And it's just time for a renewal of our contract. The state requires that we renew it every three years, and it's just time for a renewal. The judge has approved that contract and signed it, and we just need to get the county, I mean, the city to approve it as well. So I'm, and we've submitted that contract, I believe, to you, though.
Chad, have you seen the contract? I don't, we don't have it. Can I have that?
Uh, he didn't, I thought he said y'all had it already. He didn't give it.
I've got a copy of it here. I can just leave it. This is, this can't send it, man. It's, it's the same as what it was three years ago. There's no change in it. We just have to renew the dates on it.
Could this be something, Chad, that we approve, which gives Chad time to go over it? We approve it, Piny and Chad's approval, and if Chad's okay with it, then I can, I can sign it. That way they won't have to wait another month, although obviously he needs it.
Yes, sir. It expired. He's getting rid of thirty times.
Okay, all right. So that would give Chad time to look over it tonight, tomorrow, and fix up this deal. So I need a motion to approve that contract, Piny and Chad's approval.
Uh, I have a question. Approval of the contract.
Do we have such? All in, all in favor?
Okay.
Oppose motion carried. Chad, just look at it. You can call them all. So we'll get that. It just needs to go over at the fourth one. And I'll be signing on here in a minute.
It's fine, yes, sir.
And so, so we'll get that in right away.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Laura?
Um, I just wanted to share that we generated over fourteen thousand dollars in departmental revenue this year. Um, and that's probably one of the highest numbers since I've been here and with the city. We are working now on our strategic plan for downtown based off of our master plan. And that would be a three-year plan broken into three different work plans. So, uh, we're gonna start with that plan and invite any of you guys that would like to come to join us. That'll be the end of this month, and I'll get that date to you. Um, the comp plan for the city of Homerville, we have our first meeting with SGRC next week at the depot, beginning of our comp, comprehensive plan. And my partner called me today and just wanted me to reiterate how important it was that we have, um, a good show. And I'll be, I will be there and hope that most of y'all can come. I know work schedules will complete with that. Um, and then I'm just looking forward to a prosperous twenty twenty-five. Hopefully, we'll have a lot of things going in downtown. I will be working on looking into the revolving home fund. Um, that's been something that I've not had a lot of clarity on in the past. I think SGRC in the past has been our, like, our agent in between that helps with paperwork. But it requires, like, ten jobs, I believe, to be created, and that doesn't, that doesn't come by very easy in downtown. And that's why it's kind of a citywide thing.
Well, it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't have to be downtown.
Yeah, I see what I can be.
I'm not even sure it has, I'm not sure, but I'm not even a hundred percent sure it has to be in the city limits. Um, I think that there's been, um, which I approved it on the Development Authority, and so I thought I was approving the cities revolving home or the counties revolving home. It might have to be in the city limits. I'm not sure. But it could be a business expanding or a new business.
I know it's a little bit of a gray area because the copper company would sit kind of outside of the city's, like, core area. But I will reach out and see where I can find out to help you.
And just, just round them a little while, and, and the SGRC. All right, chief.
Here's a few things that I want to come back to and represent the, um, it's not only the, the, uh, represent the camera system that we tabled last month.
Does anybody have a phone from the chief?
Looking at the, the expense for that and for the camera system, it's, it will, the paper itself because it's fifty-four thousand dollars. So that it does pay for the camera system and additional cameras. And like I said last month, with these cameras, it's still, it can be a safety issue when you have the cars, stolen vehicles, missing persons, different things like that. Instead of being concentrated at a school, there's other locations, and it also will home in on different, like, stolen vehicles and stuff like that. It's been a bit of a lever or two for the police department to have that. And those who will be in the city in this, uh, Homerville.
All right, so that's, that's what you brought up last month, and it's cameras, it's non-screen cameras, correct? It's basically taggers, checking for...
And then the success rate, but those are high because you have a missing person or if you have an alert to where an elderly person has left with dementia, and they put it in the system, and they cross this way, the alert is by phone or on the computers, uh, even with stolen vehicles and stuff like that.
All right, how much is it in dollars?
It is, the initial is... The initial is fourteen thousand six hundred, and it's, uh, twelve thousand dollars a year.
Twelve thousand a year, like, every year?
Yes. Until we renew the color, correct?
I'm not using the money from the schools on camera, correct?
Yes.
Which is, like, which that, that money will be taken, I mean, we're adding it to the budget to, to do that right now.
You say what now?
Like, we would be, I mean, it's, that's, that's money that, it's not free. Like, I mean, if we're taking money from one account to pay for that, and that means that money's not paying for something else.
Go ahead.
And so, and it's fourteen thousand six hundred now, and then twelve thousand a year. You said, do we, we renew it?
Yes, it, it, it's a contract. It'll renew with the flock camera system.
All right, so is that not, does the camera system renew every year?
No, it doesn't. Not every five.
The, the term, the gold camera is renewed every five years?
This right here is determined twenty-four months for that, for your gold camera. And you're paying for these equipment. And once, once that's done, and then it'll go to the, the twelve thousand.
We can, like, say what y'all want to do. I mean, we, that's, that's a lot of money we're spending coming out of budget. We can try to budget it and look and see if we can budget it. And budget time is just coming up in two months. I'm not really comfortable right now spending fourteen thousand six hundred on that and another twelve thousand a year because that money's gonna, it's not free. That money's gonna be coming out of, you know, coming out of the police department fund. And so, so it does a lot of good, like you said. Do the cameras we have now out, out at the school, do they do that? Would they alert us if there was somebody, if there's an alert coming by, and it goes by, and they read it, unless you know that you have to actually go watch it?
Well, no, it alerts, but it's concentrated on one, one avenue, I mean, one section.
Yeah, that's right. So I mean, I...
At least the other cameras would be one further out, uh, forty-one north, forty-one south, eighty-four east and eighty-four west.
Yep. That's, what do y'all think? Y'all think it's worth it to go and do it now, or y'all want, y'all want to wait and look at it later? Let's keep it down low.
Uh, so there was a proposal to, I don't know, whether this is salary or whatever. And looking at the competition around and losing people from, everybody wants to have more, and that's what's happening. You have other agencies that are spending more, and people are leaving. So, um, the question to you, and it's in the, in the proposal I sent over. Raise your voice, please.
Said people are leaving. Any of y'all mind to off the legal chat, please?
Mm-hmm. Because, uh, he, he will make thirteen thousand dollars more going to other places. Then we have another do the same thing in, in order to be competitive and keep people in this, is what's called contention. Uh, keeping the good people. Uh, so I think that... That, well, to keep them, then we, we have to be competitive with other agencies.
Sam, when did we go last, before the quarter? Can you remember when it was? When, everybody get ready to say, I guess we got a lot of them now.
This was before I got here. It was probably twenty, twenty-two. Probably, yeah, probably twenty-two. I mean, we went up from, we went up from thirteen, fourteen dollars an hour to, to now it's, what, nineteen, twenty?
It's twenty.
Twenty, starting off, probably just twenty dollars an hour.
It's tricky getting that twenty dollars out of it.
Yeah.
And your proposals go up, starting off to just, just twenty-one dollars an hour?
Well, looking at it, it's twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. If a person has less than three years, then I propose twenty-one. But if they have more than that, then I can re, uh, evaluate their, uh, years of experience, supervisory, and, uh, education.
Now's not really the time to do this. I mean, it, it's changing, changing the budget. If we're gonna, if we're gonna give raises now and we're gonna, to spend more money, we, we've gotta work on the budget, and me and the budget, I mean, this, this is all budget time questions and requests. We, we just, financially, we can't start just spending, you know, giving raises right now when we, you know, we, we're just not finding the shape to do that, and it's not budget.
Well, however, on that paper that I submitted, I have eleven slots. And I can do one slot since it's in the budget, if, if y'all agree. One slot of just that money for the people that work in the department. So if, if, if a starting salary is forty-three thousand, then I can adjust that amongst the people that work with the police department, records are raised since it's already been put in the record. Did y'all anything to that on the project? We got anything to that on the private page group.
And so, but what if we hire somebody for that spot?
It's still, it'd still be adjusted in there with the figures with the extra, um, forty-three thousand. It's not like everybody's gonna get a ten thousand dollar raise and, uh, the other stuff is not allocated or thought about.
Now, what I'm saying is, what you're saying is you don't have all your spots full, right?
No, I, I'm, I'm willing and requesting to utilize one spot, which was the investigator's slot, to adjust to meet the needs of the department. Even with that, my request is favored into that, uh, to that position. And my proposal that I submitted, I said.
It doesn't say on, on here how many we have budgeted for. But I know a while back, we talked about positions, and we said, because of the budget issue, we weren't gonna fill those positions. You know, and I said, hey, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not only that. Like, we were, instead of filling, because you had more, like, two or three more patrol positions, and we said we were stopping at where we were.
And enough, the number wasn't left with the whole department. And then that's, that's what we, we were talking about.
How, how does that line out? One detective, the chief, and nine patrol?
No, that's including the whole department with, even with these employees, the, the office manager, the code enforcement, and the evidence and story.
Alright, um. Let's stay with this till next month, and that'll give us time to go over the budget and look at it and see where we are with everything. And we, we'll see if we can do it in a month. And then we'll just, we'll, we'll table all of this for next month, and then we'll, I'll have some answers for you and for the council of where we are financially with the police department, where we are with the budget, the whole, with how much time we gotta get to the year, and how much revenue that come in, and how much revenue going out. Is that, that okay with y'all? So let's just, let's just table all of this for next month, and then you and I can talk about all of this in a month or a year, and then we can make that. I'll present it to P D before the meeting, so they have time to look at it and ask you questions if you guys. Alright, you got anything else? I'm just really, you got anything?
So we got, done that, chief? No, I don't have any more.
Mr. James? Mr. Manis? Um, Mr. Arthur, when I say, alright, I don't need it. And so, as I said, I will give the chief by his packet before, like, uh, I'll go to get it again next week on it, and, and I'll put some numbers together, and I'll get him on it, and I'll present to y'all if you got time to look at it for next week. And any questions about the M, what we talked about, we'll be prepared for for next week. Alright, um, that is it. So any motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Alright, I'll look there.